All right, good morning, everybody. I'll call over to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 2nd. Roll call please.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, that'll be followed by our invocation. Today is led by Pastor Kim Wilcox from the North Baptist Church in Ottawa. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Pastor Young?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sure can, go ahead.
All right. Good joining me. And I just thank you for each one of these commissioners, and Father, I know they make decisions each and every day that are, even in their own individual lives, that are sometimes difficult. And Father, I pray today that whatever comes up on the agenda, that you will just give them discernment, that you give them guidance and direction. And Father, we do continue to pray for each one individually as the individuals you've created for such a time as this, Lord, to lead us through 2020, and especially through this year, that seems to be one of just complication after complication. And Lord, we know that you're aware of it, hadn't caught you by surprise. And so, just be with each one today, just give them, each one what they need to make the decision to show up for us. And Father, we thank you that each one is part of leading our county, Franklin County, and just ask for your guidance and direction. We thank you for this beautiful day you provided for us. May you receive all the glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Is there anything we need to add? Derek?
No, I don't have anything.
All right. Is there any public comment today, Janet?
None that I'm aware of, thank you.
All right, brings us to our consent agenda, which today would be to consider approving our August 26 meetings, claim boutsers in the amount of $340,979.03, payroll in the amount of $1,251,149.03, and an emergency vehicle permit for the Cutler Township Fire Department. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Don, I'll approve.
All right, thank you, Don. I heard Rick, did you want to second it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, now items of business, the first of which is to consider approving a resolution waiving the GAAP requirements for 2020. This is a thing we do annually, and Janet will fill us in on the details.
Thanks, Chair Weymeyer. As you mentioned, this is something that we do annually. There are a couple of different methods for reporting when we do our audit, and GAAP is the standard, but you can opt out of it because we use the cash basis law, and so that is what our auditor recommends that we do. So we do this resolution annually to continue using the cash basis law, which is what we have used since I've been here and for many years prior to that. So I would just ask that you consider this resolution.
All right. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the resolution waiving the GAAP requirements for 2020?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Thanks, Roy.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our second item of business, consider a letter of engagement with Rodney Burns, CPA for our 2020 audit.
As you all know, Rodney Burns has been our auditor for a number of years. We have on occasion used a different auditor, but Rodney is very experienced in the government sector. He does mostly counties and school districts. He's located in Chanute. We feel really comfortable with Rodney. We feel like we get really great service from Rodney. He is available for questions whenever any of our department heads have questions about being compliant in areas of the budget, or are any other questions that we have. So I would just recommend that we continue to utilize Rodney's services and enter into this audit engagement letter.
All right.
This is Commissioner Stottermeyer. I know, been around a lot of years, and Rodney's always done a really great job for us. I know we have tried to, once in a while, switch and go to someone else, but we turn right around and come right back to Rodney because we get such good service and no complaints. And I think he does, he knows his business, and everything works really well. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our third item of business is to review and consider an application for CDBG funds. I believe Paul's on the line.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Go ahead.
Good morning, can y'all hear me okay?
Sure can.
Okay. Want to bring forward two more grant applications for your consideration today. Before I do that, I want to give you an update on the overall program, including the two today. If they are approved, we will have impacted to date seven small businesses across the county. Original grant was $132,000. If the grants are awarded today, including payments that we're making to our consultant, we will have a remainder of just under $24,000 left to award. So I think we're helping some folks that really need the help, so wanted to give you that overall update. One of the applications is from D. George Business out of Wellsville. This is a construction business. They, it's an LLC with one employee, and that's the owner. He has met the LMI requirements. He's building a number of homes when COVID hit, and has been hit pretty hard with delays and such as he's purchased materials. He's provided expenses in the application of over $10,000. We actually have expenses tremendously more than that, but just for application purposes, we just needed to get to the $10,000 threshold, as that's the maximum for one employee business under the guidelines. He did receive a small SBA loan for $1,000, but used those funds for expenses other than what we're covering with this grant, which meets the guidelines that were given from the state. So I'm asking the commission to approve a grant of $10,000 to D. George Business LLC. This has been reviewed by our consultant underwriter, and she has approved it, and so the two of us are recommending approval to you all for $10,000 for D. George Business. The other grant is Lane Tavern in Lane, Kansas. This is a business that's been shut down because of COVID. It's created tremendous hardship for the owner. It's a sole proprietorship. She does meet the LMI requirements and has not received any other COVID relief funding to date. She has provided proof of expenses in the amount of $1,396.58. In addition, she's eligible for reimbursement of lost income replacement, and that two-month total is $1,877.50. And she has an unpaid utility expense for the Ottawa sanitation totaling $166.54. All of this totals $3,440.62. Unpaid, this is the first one I brought to you with an unpaid bill. That is allowable under the guidelines. The requirement is that the recipient of the grant will spend that money on that expense. But that's the wording of the requirement, so it's rather loose in some regards, but the intent in conversations is indeed to pay those bills so that she can get back open in operating her business. Consultant underwriter has reviewed this, and along with myself recommends approval of this grant request in an amount of $3,440.62. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Paul, this is Commissioner Dickinson. You said that she, is she still closed, and she does plan on reopening?
Yes, she does plan to reopen. And yes, she's still closed.
All right. There aren't any other questions? Would any would like to make a motion to accept the presented applications for CDBG funds?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stottermeyer, second it.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our fourth item of business is to consider and review neighborhood revitalization properties for approval.
So you have the memorandum from the City of Ottawa in front of you. There are a number of properties on here, on our list. We have, the first section are the residential new that they're planning to be sold, and there are seven in that category. There are five in the category that are residential new that will be rentals, one that is a residential remodel that plans to be sold, and three that are residential remodel for rental. You can see on the memorandum from the city that they are all planning to be entered into the new program, which we've had kind of a mix up till now of new and old program. When we made the changes to the neighborhood revitalization program, they stepped up the rebate quite a bit. So these ones that are new structures will be qualifying for 10 years, and the remodels for five years at a much higher rate of return. So those properties on there have all been reviewed by the committee and signed off on, and as soon as they meet the criteria, assuming they're approved by the three governing bodies, then they would be entered into the program.
All right, any questions or comments on these?
Commissioner Dickinson, not a question, but yes, one comment, just to be clear to the public that we don't, they don't get a refund of the entire property tax, but only the amount increase from what it was, what the value of the property was, and what it is after the remodel or the new construction. And that's it.
All right. Is there a motion to accept, let me see, a motion to approve the proposed properties into the neighborhood revitalization program as each property meets the program requirements?
Motion to approve it, Don.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our next item is to discuss plans for the District Court Foundation. Brandon on the line?
Yeah, this is Brandon. Can y'all hear me?
Sure can, go ahead, Brandon.
Good. Yeah, so with our capital improvement projects, we've been kind of knocking out here. This is another one on the list that we need to get addressed. We had a structural engineer come out from BG Consulting and take a look at this, just kind of a preliminary look and try to figure out what's going on. He was able to pinpoint exactly where the problem is located in the building. We have one relatively small section of slab that is sinking down. They, the concern is how, what's causing this? They really don't know, and we're trying to get that figured out right now. They're telling us that there's evidence of water getting under the slab there that's causing this to happen. We're working on checking plumbing lines and roof drains that run under the slab there to determine if we have a broken pipe or something. When we get that information back, we could, if we go, continue to move forward with BG Consultants, then we can pass that information along to them, and they'll base their recommendations on how to get this problem fixed for us on what we find by scoping those lines, those drain lines, and go from there. Assuming that we do move forward with BG Consultants on this, they're, the cost of their consulting services for this is $8,675.
This is Derek. That's obviously under my spending authority. That, Ed, I asked Brandon to bring this in front of you just to have the discussion. We haven't discussed the foundation over there in some time, but you'll recall that is one of the projects on our list. And between the HVAC and the foundation, if we get that shored up, then we're going to have a pretty solid building over there that should be in good shape for a long time. So I would recommend that we do move forward with this because it is an upfront cost, but obviously, whatever we do, we want to do it right. And Brandon and his staff are great at a lot of things, but they're not engineers, and that's just beyond their expertise. And so, but we would answer any questions you have.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I don't have a question, but I remember when we did our initial building tour way back in January last year, we did talk about the District Court Foundation, and at that time, it seemed like it was something that we really weren't considering to be an issue, and we weren't going to be worrying about it. Did something happen that kind of brought this back up to our attention?
No, there's nothing, there haven't been any new developments with this. It's just something that we're kind of getting to where we can, we've taken care of some of our larger, more immediate projects, and so now we can start looking at some of these other ones that are problems that need to be addressed. They're just, we're not seeing any new developments, but they still need to be taken care of.
This is Colt. My only thought on this, I guess first, was that I'm definitely happy to be taking advice from somebody who's not trying to sell us a product, which I think's great. Of course, on these foundation repairs, it seems like everybody who does them, they all kind of can accomplish the same goal, but they have somewhat proprietary ways of doing it. I just hope that, you know, whatever recommendation or guidance we get doesn't necessarily shoehorn us into one product, if that makes sense. And I think, I trust Brandon to be able to work with the engineer on that. I just would hate to get, you know, only one direction forward, if that makes sense.
Yeah, this is Don. I was here when we did it before, actually, but it, I think maybe when it was kind of worked on before, it wasn't done to the full extent. So I think it's probably time now to go back in there and get a professional opinion and get a good bid and move forward.
This is Commissioner Dunn. I'm assuming this is the west side of the District Court Building. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, over time, we've done a lot of stuff on that west side with the foundation from Mud Jack and the other forms of trying to fix it, and it continues to be a problem. So I think, like Don said, it might be a good time to reevaluate that again.
This is Derek, and both you, Roy, and Don have really illuminated why I think we would like to use an engineering firm at this point. We've tried to fix this, as both of you have alluded to, and it just, we haven't found a sustained fix. And Colt, your point is certainly, you know, valid and well said. I will work with BG as well as Brandon, and I'll make sure that they know that we're not looking to be shoehorned into a proprietary fix, or we want to know what all of our potential options are so that we can get a good group of bids and find a competitive price on this. This isn't something that we believe is necessarily getting worse, but it is something that reaches my desk occasionally, and it's usually one of the judges over there that is reaching out, asking about, you know, the big cracks in the wall, and if that's ever going to be fixed. And so, again, I do think that this would be a good use of funds, and we'll try to get, you know, an expansive, as expansive a set of advice, I guess, as we can, so that we can make the best determination of how we want to move forward.
All right. If there's nothing else on, other comments or questions on this one? Somebody like to make a motion to accept the price for the fee for BG Consultants, the proposal for BG Consultants to?
This is Commissioner Dunn. I'll make a motion to approve BG Consultants on repairs to the court building.
There you go, thanks, Roy.
This is Don, I'll second it.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our sixth item of business is a rezoning application. Is Larry on today?
Chair Weymeyer, Larry is not on today. Due to the closure out at our Planning and Building Department, I was contacted by a local bank. They've been working for quite some time with the Andersons, who are the owners of this property, to work on getting some financing work done for them. After speaking with Dee and the Planning Department, this has been something that she's been working on with them since February. They finally have the survey all completed. The purpose of this survey is to just redraw the lines on this property to divide off a small tract for one of the family members to purchase. The family member did not want to purchase all of the acreage, so the acreage will be joined with another portion of land adjoining it. And the person who, the family member will be taking a small section with a house on it. So this just redraws the lines so they can complete some financing.
All right. Very similar to a lot of them we do. It's located on the south side of 68 Highway, east of 31. Of course, your packet's available for any questions you may have. Anybody have any comments or concerns before we look to consider this rezoning application?
This is Don. I know the location, I know the issue, and I think it's just a clear cut thing, and Larry's always, and his group is always very good to put it together. I'll make approval of the case in 2003, age 1747.
All right, thanks, Don. Is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and I just wanted to say I do appreciate the planning commission. You know, I don't think all of our committees get enough of kudos that they're kind of behind the scenes, and they've already gone through this and discussed it before it comes to us. So yes, I vote yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, that brings us to staff reports. Derek?
All right. Couple of things. First, we continue, Janet and I primarily, to work through this Spark Funding process. She sent an email to all of our community partners. As you will recall, we allocated a quarter of a million dollars for a program designed to help our community partners with any and all COVID-related expenses or projects. And she sent an email out middle of last week soliciting feedback from them, so we're currently working through that process. I know several of our community partners have already reached out to us. I've talked to the Elizabeth Layton Center, obviously FCDC, and so we are expecting to get pretty good feedback from that. I've also heard from several of the smaller cities, and they are interested in potentially using some of this funding for certain COVID-related projects, which I've always said that if the county as an organization doesn't look out for some of these small towns, then nobody's going to. I mean, originally, when we were putting this whole Spark Funding process together, we asked all the towns, all the school districts, to get us information on what their expenses are, and we didn't hear anything from most of these towns, but we went ahead and allocated funding proportionally anyway. And the reason being is they just, they don't have the staff. You know, your Lanes and Rand Tools and Richmond's, they just, they don't have the tax base, they don't have the staff to do some of this, and so, but this is a good example of why we do it. And I do think that some of them are going to be able to put this money to good use, and it'll be, the people that live there will be better off for it. So we're working through that. Elizabeth Maxwell reached out to me early last week, and I'm going to get her on one of these calls so we can start this discussion again. But you will recall, back in February, we gave an additional $10,000 to the Meals on Wheels program. The reason we did that is we are lagging pretty far behind the adjacent counties in terms of how much we're funding that program, and we're also the biggest user of the program. And so, we did that to help make it a little better in 2020. In 2021, we went ahead and budgeted for this, but you may recall that part of that discussion in February, we gave $10,000, and that obviously was appreciated, but there was another roughly 15 that it would have taken to get us basically where we need to be commensurate with the other counties in the area. And so, she has reached back out to see if it would be possible for us. The actual amount is $14,600. I'm not asking you for that today. I want to get her on one of these calls, and she can talk back through all of the details again so that you can make a more educated decision. But I do know in February, I reviewed all of this with her and formed the same opinion, and that's that the county wasn't paying its fair share. And so, if here in a couple weeks, we decide that we want to give the additional 14 sticks... give the additional fourteen six, that will put us, that'll put us back in a spot that is, again, commensurate with our use of the program, and it's also will be the same amount that we budgeted in 2021. I'll tell you, I've had Janet check the revenues, and we believe that there would be enough for us to do that. But again, we'll have that discussion more fully at a later date. Casey has been working hard on, I mean, obviously, she's still working hard on COVID, along with the rest of us, but she's really been working on pushing our rebranding out. As you know, we have a new logo. She's been working hard on specifically email signature blocks. We're changing all of our signatures to incorporate the new logo. The website will be a big part of that process, and that's going to take eight or nine months to fully get that updated. But that is something that's frankly been long overdue, but we're starting to work through that process. On the COVID front, and I'm going to say this every week, because I think it's important, you know, we're watching, and I know all of you see it, the world around us is kind of starting to relax a little bit, get a little bit complacent. I want all of you to know that this is not letting up from a county staff standpoint. The Health Department, myself, Casey, Janet, we're all working just as hard on COVID-19 as we were four, five, and six months ago. We're still getting the phone calls, we're still getting the complaints. And sadly, what we're seeing is that, you know, there have always been kind of two sides of this argument, those that think this is a myth, and that it's going to go away on November 3rd, and those that, you know, think that we should be required to wear masks if we step out our front door, and anything less is completely irresponsible. What we are finding is that those groups are continuing to get further and further apart, and more and more passionate in their stance on this. And I fear that we're going to continue seeing that all the way up through this election, because I think so much of it is laced with politics, and so, we're taking care of that. We try to keep as much of that off of your plate as commissioners as we can, and generally, I think we do a good job of that. But as you all know, occasionally, a couple, one or two will slip through and will require your attention. But, you know, we're trying to stay on top of this as best we can, and we'll continue to do that. But, yeah, it looks like this is gonna, you know, this is gonna be with us again through all the 2020, and I bet you every bit of the first quarter, if not the first half of 2021 as well. With that, I know I've got Nick on here, so I'll turn this over to him. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I, uh, I will, once again, echo what Derek said on some of this. We are seeing two sides of the board, and they're quickly widening into two completely different opinions. This is making contact tracing, this is making testing, this is making education more and more difficult every day. We, uh, we have spent a lot of time working with the schools throughout the last few weeks, and honestly, I'm very happy to report that they are, they're doing a good job. We've been in contact with them a lot. As we've started school, we've talked through scenarios, we've worked on gating issues, and we've had some parents that are less than happy about them, and we've had some parents that are very happy about them. But the overall goal of this is to keep the kids playing sports for as long as possible. So, I have been very happy with working with the school superintendents, athletic directors, and school nurses. The big thing that's came down the pipes the last couple days has been CMS has released new guidelines for nursing facilities, and those guidelines very much stress that the nursing facilities need to do more testing on their employees, more testing if there is a potential outbreak. And a lot of the rapid testing supplies have now been taken away from the health departments and other agencies, and given to the nursing homes for rapid testing. So that's made it more and more difficult to get rapid testing. But the guidelines from CMS does not really meet the guidelines of KDHE, the guidelines of CDC, and working through those and trying to make sure we have enough supplies is going to be quite a task, because they didn't allocate enough rapid tests to meet what the guidelines say. So that's one of the things that's going to be a battle for us at the Health Department and the nursing facilities in our community. As I alluded, all the rapid tests that we were allocated to get have been taken and given to these facilities. So we are back in the market for rapid testing yet again. I have a meeting at one o'clock, in which I hope we can secure something. One of the other things that we have, we've seen great difficulties with is some of these outline community rapid testing centers that aren't following guidelines. We, uh, we try to test potential exposed individuals five to seven days following contact. What we've noticed is some of these outline clinics that do rapid testing, if somebody tests positive today, and the family's booking an appointment to go in there today and get tested, they're allowing that to happen, which is not anywhere meeting any of the guidelines for testing. And these people now are getting to negative tests, which have strong potential to be in false negatives. So, I've been working hand in hand with the state, trying to figure out if we can come up with some kind of guidelines to prevent this from happening. That's been, the majority of the week are those items right there. The Health Department staff are gearing up for flu clinics. We are in the process of starting to work with Tom and Alan on getting some initiation plans set up for the flu clinics, and what's that's going to look like coming into October, towards the end of this month also. So, we, I know Aaron has reached out to Casey to start getting the information out on what that's going to look like. So you should see some stuff pretty soon. As far as my other departments, EMS has been fortunate that we are able to put poppers, which is the gold standard for COVID response for our, for our employees. We're able to put one pepper on every truck, and that's, that's great news to help ensure that we are protecting our employees throughout this response. So, that's been a good opportunity for us. The employees are, like, they have a better option than just masks when they're responding to known COVIDs. Good news with dispatch is, we have been full staff for about a couple months now. One of those individuals, the new individual has been in training. They will be released the middle of this month to the end of this month, and we'll be able to go back to our staffing. At peak times, we have three people all the time. So, that's going to be a great, great change in our department to have that filled back up. So, if you have any questions, that's my report for you.
All right. Well, thanks for the update, Nick. Not sure who all's on. I don't have my Zoom in front of me, but Sheriff, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Just a quick update. You know, we have some staff down attending the academy down at KLETC. This last week, all of them were also tested with the rapid COVID test. So, from what I understand, part of that was, is some, something to do with some research and validation of studies. But that happened down at KLETC this last week. As you know, we have a canine program. We do have, currently, we have three canines that we have out on the street. The bulk of that is funded through the Sheriff's Foundation with a gift from the Raymond and Margaret Gibson Family Trust that we receive. One of our dogs is reaching the end of his working life, and so we've been in the process of trying to locate another, another dog to replace that one. We have one located, and all the videos, all the testing on it looked pretty good. So we are in the process of having that dog shipped here from Holland. And so we will be having a new dog here pretty soon that will be replacing one that we currently have. The dog that it will be retiring, we still have a responsibility to maintain and take care of that dog, and our intention is that we will, that he will be formally retired, and then live out the rest of his natural life with his current handler. So, that's kind of the industry standard, and it's the safest way to do things, and it's best for the, best for the dog in the long run. So, other than that, unless you guys have questions for me, that's about all I have to report.
All right. Well, thank you, Sheriff.
Yep.
David Lee? Let's go down to Janet. Are you, do you have any updates for us, Janet?
I don't have anything.
All right.
Janet, this is Don, I got a question.
Sure.
You got one of the ballot boxes, votes box you have in front of your courthouse?
Yes.
Now, I heard a deal, which I'm sure you're not probably not going to do, but I heard a deal on the governor telling voting representatives to purchase more of them with their COVID funds. Have you heard anything on that?
Yes, we've had a lot of discussions about that. So, actually, before the governor even released that, that she wanted us to use our COVID funds to purchase ballot boxes to be placed outside, the Secretary of State's office had already secured a vendor and secured enough boxes for two more boxes for every county, so 210 boxes. And they are exactly like the one that I have out front, that I purchased earlier this year with COVID funds that I received from the Secretary of State's office, specifically for our county. I am in discussions with the Secretary of State's office, and all the other counties are currently discussing it too, how we might be able to put those out into our community in different areas. I would really like to place one out in Wellsville, just because that's such a large, growing area for us, and we did have a lot of mail ballots come from that area. But just making sure that we meet safety and security requirements for that box, we don't want people to feel like they placed their ballots in those boxes and that they're not safe. So, whether that means putting some type of security guard on that box, or some kind of security camera, or something, something else, we're all currently having those discussions, so we can make sure that while the ballot boxes are accessible to our citizens, that we also are protecting the ballot also. So, with the one sitting out here on Main Street in front of the courthouse, it has good security on it, it has great lighting, it has high visibility in the community. So, that's not so much of a concern for this box, but if we were to put two more boxes out in our community somewhere, we definitely would have some concerns that we need to address. So, I am planning to get those from the Secretary of State's office, and hoping to find some places to put those out, so we can meet the needs in our community.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I had a census question last week about OU. Did you have a chance to check into that?
I haven't been able to get an answer on that, Ian, I'm sorry. I, it's just, it's difficult to get feedback from our census person, just because he's covering so many counties. So I did send a message to him, but I haven't heard anything back yet.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Let's go on to Commissioners' comments and Board reports. Commissioner Sotomayor, do you have anything?
Uh, I did go to Wellsville meeting from last week, and I'm trying to think, it, it, everything was pretty basic. Do have some new housing going in up there. They're redoing some of their bylaws and stuff for junk vehicles and so forth. If any of you haven't had a chance, when you go up to Wellsville, pull down there, and our new concrete road is getting a lot of use. I know I've been by there several times, and the semis are using that pretty well for their main in and out to the complex there. So I think it looks really good, and I think it was a good investment. One other thing, we will be having a solid wait authority meeting by Zoom next week. If anybody's interested, it'd be next Thursday. If anybody's interested, I can give them the contact for that if they'd like. I know we haven't met face to face all year for a actual meeting. We did meet early in March when we hired the new coordinator, but things weren't really, they were just kind of getting heated up then. So, but we haven't had a face to face meeting all year. Lake Region RC&amp;D, we've only had one face to face meeting this year, and it was in February. So, actually, it's pretty hard to conduct a lot of business with the state and other organizations when they're not allowing their people. And we don't, we respect that. So, because we don't want to cross state lines. It's a little easier when you're all staying in the same county and know each other, but still, we have a problem. So, it'd really be a problem when you start crossing state line, county line. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, Don. Commissioner Dickinson?
I just have several things. Number one, there are, we just did, voted on neighborhood revitalization properties, but there's four more that will be coming down the pike. Some that are new construction and some that are remodel. And for all of our citizens, I know some of you are not in a good position financially. There, the Food Policy Council sent out information. There are a lot of ways to obtain food, if that's a problem in your household. So, please reach out if you are needing food resources. There are a lot of different options available. Census, please, we only have till the end of the month now. Please, 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 if you have not yet filled out your census, please get that done. I know that they tried to make it easier this year online, and maybe that's good with everything else that's going on. But please get it done if you need, if you still need to do that. This Monday is Labor Day. Please reconsider getting together with groups. It seems like every time we have a holiday, we have a big upsurge in COVID cases, and they're saying even small groups, you can have even family groups, you can have a lot of COVID transmission. So, right before school starts, or right here at the beginning of school, we need to be extra cautious about our gathering, and just try to stay smart in, in what we do to try to keep this COVID down. And then one thing I had, had just read about yesterday, and it's really sad, but, you know, we're working so hard to spend our COVID dollars correctly and smartly, and then you read about that there has been over a billion dollars of fraud from the PPP funds and from COVID, you know, COVID aid fraud, and you just think, you know, you think, I wouldn't have thought about it, you know, to try to do something to get free money. But there are people out there that are using this as a way to take the money away from deserving businesses. take the money away from deserving businesses and, uh, yeah. And, and they are starting to prosecute. So, that's good. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Um, don't have anything at this time.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
I don't have anything either.
All right. Our FCDC meeting was postponed. I also do not have anything I need to add. So, uh, Derek, before we look to adjourn, do you have anything you need to add?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yeah, Don.
Uh, I noticed on the upcoming event, we won't be having a study session next Monday, will we? It has it down.
Um, Don, that's something Colton and I will talk about, um.
It's a holiday.
As I, oh, yeah, it is a holiday.
That's what I mean.
So, no, we will not be having one.
Okay, I want to make sure we all notice that.
Yeah, no, we'll get it taken off of there.
Good deal. All right. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I'm motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson.
I think Roy got in there. All right. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.